Welcome, everyone, to the Eugene City Council Work Session for December 8th. Welcome to everyone here and at home. Councilor Shoret is out of town and unable to attend, and we expect everybody else to be I think I will wait on the motion that we were going to do first, and we'll just go ahead and start with the legislative update first, and we'll do that in a second, because if everybody here won't do it. Okay, so, City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor, and I'll turn it over to Lisa.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilor. We are circling back on the discussion on legislative policy. In the interim, we did, we were able to convene the IGR Committee this afternoon and had an opportunity to go through the policies that are in front of you tonight. There's an additional approval that's being requested of council as a follow-up from an MPC meeting last Thursday, and that is the Oregon Transportation Forum's Transportation Funding and Policy Package. The IGR had a chance to go over this today and answered, had some questions answered by Rob Interfeld, Transportation Planner, and the IGR recommended that the council approve this today. The issue was that because the council hasn't taken specific action on this, neither the Mayor nor Councilor's link have felt comfortable approving it on behalf of Eugene. So, the MPC motion that passed was pending Eugene Council approval of this. The MPC approved that set of recommendations.
And just to clarify, this is a funding and policy package being recommended by the Oregon Transportation Forum, right?
Yes.
You want to say what that is?
And the Oregon Transportation Forum is a very broad-based sort of coalition. It includes people from industries, public agencies, the Oregon Bicycle Alliance, a very broad sort of coalition. So, the policies that are included here are sort of brokered policies and balanced and represents lots of different interests, and so it's considered a very balanced package.
And the way it came to us was actually via the UMPAC, which is all the MPOs in metropolitan planning organizations for the state, and they wanted to make a recommendation in support of this transportation funding and policy package that the forum put out, but they couldn't do that unless the members of the MPOs were supportive of it. And I was not able to speak on behalf of you because we hadn't talked about this, so just checking back with you. And what we'll do is after you make your decision, we'll, Lisa, we'll email them with that decision this evening so they can, they'll know what the response is.
Right.
Questions? So, maybe just a motion out on the table. There isn't one in front of you. You'll just have to do it on the fly here.
Okay. Are we doing all of this or just pieces?
I think you could do them piece by piece. Give me this first piece.
Just which?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, I move to adopt the transportation funding and policy package that was presented to support?
To support?
Yeah. The package is presented.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. Other questions, concerns? All those in favor, please indicate. Seven in favor and none in opposition, it passes. Thank you.
Okay, then moving on to the main policy document that's before you this evening. Just a reminder for those who may not have seen the session a week or so ago, the council two years ago approved a pilot process for the legislative session in which we were going to be having a more focused, concentrated lobbying agenda rather than taking positions on all the bills or many, many bills. We're prioritizing those that are particularly high priority for us and those on which we believe we can influence the outcome through our lobbying efforts. So, the package in front of you supports that approach, and similar to how we did it in the 2012 and 13 and 14 sessions, this allows us to have sort of a policy envelope or policy window, if you will. And the way I described it this afternoon for the IGR Committee was that similar to an ANIPA process, you can get a categorical exclusion for environmental impact for, say, a bus stop, that if that bus stop meets the impacts that are known for air pollution and stormwater runoff and transportation, it's automatically approved. And so, what we're looking for here is consideration and approval of a set of policies within which we would lobby, knowing that we're trying to lobby for the outcome here, rather than coming back. The big issue is, and we discussed this at length this afternoon, if we're lobbying a specific bill number that has a specific set of clauses in there, and then that changes, but we are still lobbying the same outcome, we lose a step in having to come back and get approval. So, we're asking for the sort of policy outcome-based approval within this policy, within this package. And we can, I think, if we want to go topic by topic, there's a couple of...
Can I stop you for just a second?
Yeah.
So, it's not in our, this week's package, is it?
No. I re-sent it to you, and I have copies if people need additional copies. Yes.
Do I have it in front of you?
I don't have it in front of me, but I read the email.
Okay.
She brought copies.
An email you can get dated on your machines here that's dated December 5th from Lisa. Except George.
All right. I just want to be sure everybody had it.
Thank you. I meant to send those out around earlier.
Mine's at home.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Anybody else need it?
So, if we'll start with the first one, which is transportation. In conversation this afternoon, Councilor Clark proposed adding an additional bullet, which was to pursue legislative funding for the Beltline River Road to Coburg project, prioritizing that for both because of capacity and safety issues. It is our highest priority. That's not a new designation, but it's because we have an opportunity through the transportation package, making it known that that's a very high priority for our community.
Anybody have an objection to that being added to this part of the package?
No.
I didn't think so. Okay.
So, we can keep going. I guess I would be looking for if there's questions or clarifications on any of the bullets. Otherwise, we'll keep going. Okay. Rail, this is a package that's consistent with the work that we've been doing through the statewide rail study and initiative. Particularly, it focuses on our capacity issues, and the Mayor can certainly speak to how some of our freight capacity or freight usage limits are on time, passenger rail performance, and so it's continuing to work with the state in trying to achieve those outcomes.
Questions on the rail portion? Okay.
Under land use, this is consistent with our policy of taking opposing legislation that would eliminate or weaken existing methods of annexation. That's not a new policy.
Questions? Some annexation here? Okay.
Rights away management. Again, this is consistent with our current policy of opposing anything that would preempt our local control or local authority for telecommunications.
Questions? Seeing none.
And I don't know that I, unless you would like me to, going through each of the bullets, but basically, these, all these remaining five bullets under that heading are consistent with our telecommunications practices and policies that we have been operating under. The Comcast bill that came up a couple of years ago that we lobbied initially against and then for one that would have worked for us, follow all of these policy guidelines. Okay, so, moving on. Support housing opportunities and financial stability for Eugene residents. This is consistent with our existing policies, and then also includes some of our more recent priorities around things like Housing First, seeking funding, working with the state on that.
Okay.
Okay, moving along. Local finance options. There were a couple of questions around this that came up this afternoon that we answered in terms of what some of these mean. Some of them are a little bit hard to understand, but basically, some of the questions around granting exemptions for taxation, those, there's, we're not, these are not new policies. These are sort of maintaining existing policies, and many of these have been in place for five-plus years. Economic development, there was a proposed addition, which is to support infrastructure that provides new economic development opportunities, and Councilor Clark might want to speak to that, but it was specific to continue to pursue lit fiber, broadband, and things that could continue to help us achieve our goals. Public safety, there was a question around supporting alcohol impact legislation, whether or not we wanted to pursue a more narrow Eugene-only bill. We're not specifically introducing or proposing to introduce a bill around this. If it comes up, my guess is it would be something that Portland would be looking at, and we would want to support that and hope that it would apply to us as well. One issue that came up today that I saw that the chief sent me legislation around that may come up this session, you may or may not want to include today, is around the addition of body cameras, and so that's something that Portland will likely introduce, and I think we'd want to support. I think it probably merits inclusion.
Uh-huh.
Is there a question?
Mike, you have a question or a comment?
I'll make my comments when she gets done, and it comes to us. I'll just save that one in my head.
I'm done.
Okay. Excellent.
Then I will. The infrastructure issue was really one that had an asterisk next to it as well when we talked about telecommunications issues in our right-of-way. While we would never want to do anything that precludes our local authority, we also don't want any of our actions or holding up anything like that to get in the way of the potential for infrastructure development.
Right.
So, if those get leveled off by some manner of bill, for me personally, I'm speaking now, I would think that it's wiser for us to look towards infrastructure development. When I was talking about high-speed data especially, I read something recently by, from a friend, that the early development of our country was done predominantly near waterways and where commerce could flow down that as a transportation corridor, and then later in our country's development by rail, where data and its flow and speed will be a large determinant of our future economy. So, we, in my opinion, need to do a better job with that as a community of making sure that we're connected, so I would want us to do everything we can to advocate for that. On the body camera issue, so a conversation recently for Police Commission, and I know the chief in advocating for that has this plan, I am sure. I am absolutely in favor of the idea of body cameras, so if it's a funding opportunity, I would be in support of that. The only other side of that is the civil liberties issues involving, that we've brought up and talked about only a little bit yet at Police Commission, which is that any time an officer then enters somebody's home for any particular reason, you can, there are a lot of things become in plain view and recordable, and just issues around information and data storage and those sort of things, so...
And I think that's an issue that the chief mentioned to me just before the work session, that might be sort of coming up in tangent, which is around public records requests having to be somehow changed, altered to...
So, I would just say that I like the idea, but it comes with, we have work to do at Commission to make sure that everyone's protected well with that as well, so...
So, I'm going to ask the other two members of the IGR, Councilor Polling?
Yeah, I, too, am in favor of the body cameras. Mike brings up a good point around the funding issue. I heard a couple of weeks ago, there's a city, I believe it may have been in Indiana, somewhere back east, that actually is getting rid of their body cameras because of all the nuisance requests through the Public Information Act to get all these unnecessary, I mean, basically, they ask for every recording ever done, and it's costing the department, they've exhausted their budget, actually, for that particular issue. It's tying up personnel, manpower, to download all these recordings that were made, so I understand the public's right to see this information. However, when it gets to the point where it's considered a nuisance, in fact, the chief at that police department stated that he's terminating the body camera program because of the financial impact and the impact on the time. It's just consuming them, so we need to address that issue also.
Glenn?
Just to let you know, the public records laws in Oregon, sounds like, are a little bit different than whatever city that, or whatever state that was. In Oregon, if somebody made that kind of request, we would just say no, and the reason for that is there's an exemption in the Public Records Act for criminal investigatory information until the case is over, until there's a decision not to prosecute, or there's, the prosecution is completed. So, if somebody said, "I want everything," it's like, well, we can go through each file and determine which ones of those are parts of files that have been closed, but in Oregon, we get to charge you the reasonable cost for redacting, which means somebody would have to pay an awful lot of money for us to decide which of those body camera videos that can actually be released. And even then, in Oregon, because of a different statute, we have an obligation to actually redact or block the face of certain police officers, and so we'd have to, even in the ones that we're releasing, do that kind of redaction, which would also be an additional cost. So, the same issues that have happened, I think, in Washington and whatever state that city's in, would be handled differently here.
Okay, and I have, Betty, you're next. Do you have anything you want to say? No? And, yeah, I have George Brown, and I think Mike has something else he wanted to say, too. Mike, I mean, George, excuse me.
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, about the body cams, I think it should be added, and about, you know, sharing what's on there. It's funny, Oregon is so progressive in many ways, and yet, I feel like our public information, we're kind of behind some of the other states, Ohio in particular. You can, for instance, you can go to the Attorney General's website and watch stuff like this, and you can, you can listen to internal investigation interviews before the case has been adjudicated, and all the information is there. It's open. You can, you can see it before, before the final trial, you know? So, I, but anyway, that's just peripheral. I'm just making a comment to what I heard before. I've got a couple of questions. Public safety, the very first bullet point, Eugene opposes efforts to increase supervisor representation. Could you explain a little bit?
Well, that's, there was a specific bill that first came up in the 2013 full session, I think it was Bill 1518, and it was one that coupled redefining supervisory employees in a way that impacted both police and fire, and it was, we, both through IGR and then the council, took a stance to oppose that strongly because it was going to affect our operations and sort of management supervisory structure. In the 2014 session, a separate bill came forward that singled out firefighters, and it passed, so we, we lost that lobbying battle. So, we're basically consistent with previous actions, saying we would, we would oppose an additional bill that came forward trying to impose this on police.
Okay, thank you. And then, just down a couple, support alcohol-impact area legislation or administrative rules. Could you talk about that a little bit?
Yeah, I can talk in my limited ability, and then the chief is here to probably give a little more information or answer any questions. So, we had a pilot process several years ago to establish an alcohol-impact area, and basically, it's trying to target the sort of high-volume, high-alcohol-content beverages that are sold at certain kinds of stores that create more of the public nuisances and there's crimes, and so it's trying to stop that essentially. And so, it was very successful in its pilot process. There was a bill that came up two years ago that got some traction, but ultimately did not pass, so we would continue to support passage of a bill that would allow us to have an alcohol-impact area in place.
Yeah, as I recall, some of the stores that, I mean, it was voluntary.
It was voluntary.
They were asked, asked some of these stores that carry the high-gravity and expensive malt beverages to not carry them anymore.
Right.
Or limit their number that they would sell, any individual, maybe, I think, just not carrying them flat out, and that evidently improved public safety in those areas. And does Portland have some areas like this?
No. In fact, they, they believed that they had the authority to enact through an ordinance this, and so, they didn't, and so, the bill that went forward two years ago was an effort to get statutory authority to enact a...
I see. Okay. And then I have one on the previous topic, local finance options, preservation and enhancement of state shared revenues that flow to the city's general fund, specifically beer, end wine, liquor, and soon marijuana revenue. Was there some threat of those revenues decreasing?
Is there some threat of them?
I mean, to have this as a, that we would support this policy is...
So, I think the existing policy...
...of like, cutting down the revenue.
I believe that policy existed.
That the city would receive?
No. What I believe is that the policy existed, and we've added marijuana revenue.
Oh, I see.
To make sure that we're not, that we have the ability to continue to accrue any revenue that we already do. And I don't know, Glenn, if you have any information on that.
There have been attempts in prior legislative sessions for, whether it was some state agency or somebody else that said, "Hey, cut the amount of state shared revenues going to cities or counties and use it for this other purpose."
I see.
So, that, that has happened in the past.
Okay.
I have no idea if it will happen this year.
Not recently, yeah. Okay, well, that makes sense, then. I was just curious why, gosh, why have that in there?
I think just a firewall.
Take the money and use it for something else. That's a good reason to have it in here. Okay, I think that's all the questions I have. Thanks.
I've got Alan in the first round, and then Mike in the second round, but I wanted to ask a couple of things. One is this afternoon, we talked about, suppose something comes up, a piece of legislation that you all are interested in, that we either supporting or that's not on the list, doesn't fit into the envelope, or something just comes up you hadn't thought about, and Lisa can tell you what process that you prefer to be used here.
It would be similar to how we had done it initially. If something came up, either that was departing from the policy direction that you've given me already, or is new, that we haven't considered yet, it would go through the process. I would convene IGR, we would talk about it. If it was a timely thing, we might go straight to council. If it came up on a Friday and you were meeting on a Monday, as I have in the past, come to you and introduce a bill and give you an update on what the issues are and what recommended position might be on that. So, I mean, this isn't, this isn't meant to sort of anticipate every possible bill that comes up, but it's meant to anticipate the reasonable range of policies that might come up through, through bills that we would want to be ready to act on quickly. As the mayor said, if something comes up outside of that, we'd certainly come back through the IGR process into council.
And the others this afternoon, I think it was Councilor Polling who requested from you that they, that we sort of bring to the service a no-surprises policy, that if you get...
Right, I think it's Councilor Clark.
...something you will let, that we think we might have to deal with in the paper or in some other way the next day, that you'll, you'll give us heads up about it. And the third thing that I just wanted to hit was, is this, will this be on the website so that people can see what our legislative policies are?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Alan?
One question, three comments. Economic development, first bullet. Eugene supports statutory creation of the Pacific Northwest Manufacturing Partnership.
Right. I mentioned this briefly at the last meeting. So, we participated a year ago in submitting an application to the Investing in Manufacturing Communities Grant Program, which was a multi-agency, but primarily through the Economic Development Agency, a federal initiative. And so, in preparing our application, we created a partnership, the Pacific Northwest Manufacturing Partnership, which includes Eugene, Springfield, Land County, Albany, Corvallis, Hood River, and Portland, Vancouver. And so, when the first round of applications came out, we were not selected. We were 13th. They designated 12. We decided at that time it made sense to keep the momentum and gain some traction. We'd like to get a state designation, and so we've submitted this concept. Senator Edwards is going to sponsor this bill. There is a second round that's coming out for the designation, which we would also pursue, but this gives us an opportunity to get a statutory designation and also to pursue funding from the state.
Right. Okay, now I recall that. Thanks. I support that. There's a couple of things that I think should be on here that aren't on here, that we've created as policies for, by council. One is divestment, and I suspect there'll probably be some bills coming up this year around divestment. I think we have a pretty clear policy around that already, so I'd like to see that added. The other one is about paid sick leave. I know there is a bill being worked on right now at the state level to have a statewide paid sick leave, and I think pretty much the starting place is very close, if not our ordinance, so that should be on the legislative parties as well. And then, another one that's a little less clear, around, around housing and support of opportunities. One of the things who, I put out a work session poll around housing and microhousing and what kind of code things we need to do in order to do that, so I would like to, I think there's going to be some legislation potentially in that area as well, proposed bills, so I'd like to see a... We are supportive of creating innovative housing alternatives, like the rest stops, like the Opportunity Village, and to the degree that we need to have state housing code or building codes, be able to make those happen, I think those, that should be a priority as well. After talking to Stuart Ramsing, I'm not sure we actually need, there's a couple of little things that need to occur, but there might not be any major things that need to occur in order to foster those types of pilot programs that we already have running, that are really running really successfully. And we're going to talk about them then, next, I think.
This might be one of those where, as they come up, we'd actually want to come back and talk about, because, for example, with microhousing or tiny housing, the council, as far as I know, really hasn't established a policy or taken a position on that, and so, maybe as those kinds of things come up, we would, we would come back through this process and actually have that conversation with the IGR and/or the council.
Yeah, I was trying to distinguish microhousing from the things that we've already done, like Opportunity Village and Rest Stops, so, in, in, in bills.
So, can I ask a question on that one? So, John, in your view, is if we want to do that in a timely enough fashion to have anything to do with a piece of legislation, do we need to have that policy, get that policy, just have Alan do a poll, or how to...
He already has a poll.
Well, we already had one, and it was approved. I don't know what it was.
Have that poll.
So, we just need to queue it up, huh?
Yeah, and part of it, I think, would be what is the actual legislation that comes out, that then we're reacting to a little bit about that.
The reason I was asking is I got something in the mail today, actually, from Dan Bryant, about the County Homeless and Poverty Board readying something around that. They'd seen in other states where they have, they're doing some legislative policy around microhousing and are looking toward whether we want to do that in Oregon, and I told, my message back was, "You better do it quick, because this is coming fast."
Right.
So, I just think that's worth maybe a discussion with our partners to see what needs to happen to get that, and how do we want to, what role do we want to play in that?
And that, that microhousing one is approved, but not on the agenda yet.
Yeah, got it. You're through?
Yes.
Mike?
Thank you. As a couple of the things that I brought up in IGR today were, as policy things and things we've talked about in work sessions already that we're working on still, are heavier lifts that one needs to prepare for in a later legislature. These two, I think, can fall into that category of, as things come up that are related, Lisa has kind of a trigger mechanism for coming back to talk with us about how to support and be supportive of those things like Alan brought up. And I would bring another up that I, it didn't occur to me till after IGR meeting with regard to public safety. In 1997, the ledge passed Senate Bill 1145, and I have, I don't know this to be a fact that many will, but I had heard a conversation once about counties wanting to create legislation that de-penalizes them for opting out of Senate Bill 1145, which, at the time in '97, created the PSCC, which I don't frankly think is as great a service body for us as it could be. I don't know that that's the best use of time for some, but most importantly, it mandated that anybody's, that was sentenced at the state level, that had to serve a year or less, it mandated that they serve that at the county level, and that was done at a time when states didn't have enough money to support the, their prison system, and counties had a lot more money. One of the issues we have, and we talk about on Police Commission, is that the county jail, as everybody knows, is insufficient. Us being released from that mandate of 1145 could allow a different way of people who are sentenced for less than a year to serve in different places, freeing some flexibility for the jail. So, I guess I would say that if that comes up at the legislature as well, I would want that to come back for us to discuss, because I'd... that to come back for us to discuss because I'd like to see us support flexibility for what the county has the ability to do when it comes to jails. I'd love to see us get out of that, but that's just
Let me just be sure we understand what we understand. So, I think what we're going to do is pass a motion or put forward a motion about this envelope of legislative priorities and with a couple additions. I think the ones, unless you -- unless people tell me otherwise, I think that the policy issues that you -- this body has already dealt with, that Alan brought up, were the divestment and sick leave. So, they should already be within the envelope.
Adopted policies.
The microhousing, I believe the discussion led us to think we need to have more discussion on that topic. And then, we had talked about a mechanism for bringing up other issues as we move along. Does that cover it?
In addition to the two that Counselors Lenka suggested, I had mentioned three.
Yes.
One is, under transportation, pursue legislation, funding -- pursue funding for Beltline River Road to Coburg.
Yep.
Under economic development, support infrastructure that provides new economic development opportunities. And then, under public safety, support body cameras and funding.
Yep.
And I'll come up with nicer language, but
I would apologize for one last thing.
Yes. Mike.
One of the things I wanted to say, too, is not just for the cameras, but for the data storage, which will be immense as an expense in doing that.
Okay.
Okay. With that known by all of you, and it will end up in the final product, you're going to put a motion out?
Yeah.
I move to approve the IGR 2015 legislative policies and priorities as amended in this meeting.
Second. Moved and seconded. Further discussion? All those in favor, please indicate. One, two, three, seven. None in opposition. It passes. Thank you all very much.
So, one more thing. Lastly, you're being asked to endorse the League of Oregon Cities Priorities, which are in your packet.
Oh.
And they are priorities that you voted on. They were
The League of Oregon Cities
Oh, you adopted those last time, didn't you? Gosh, I fell
Yeah, we did those. You're ahead of the game.
Yeah, no, we could have closed the deal.
Not that good.
Thank you.
Way to close it.
Yeah, I want to close the deal. Got it.
Okay. So, second item, Counselor Pryor has a motion to put out on the table.
I do. I move to approve two rest stops at 2411 Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard behind the Land County Behavioral Health Facility.
Agreed. Moved and seconded. Can we have some explanation of what that is, City Manager?
Yes. Yeah.
A couple of weeks ago, the county indicated that they'd be willing to provide us property if we had an operator that would be willing to sponsor a rest stop site. So, we have been working with Nightingale Health Sanctuary over the last couple of weeks, and they are willing to host two sites on that location. So, we've also been in close conversations with the county about what that could look like in the event that council was willing to approve such a site. So, this will provide enough space for 30 people via two 15-person sites. And will run from the time that we can get it up and operating through, not around the end of April, because we've committed to freeing up that space for university parking for football games.
All right. And the agreement with the Nightingale folks, have you reached agreement on that? The rule, you know, what we always do for rest stops?
Yes. We've been working through that. We haven't asked them to sign anything because we were waiting for this action.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
We've been working through the terms and conditions and have been in a lot of conversations with them over many months as we were looking for a site. But they -- we've been waiting to have them sign anything until this action was
Taken.
Taken.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. I've got Mike and then George Polling in the queue.
Our authority on this is because this is, like others, the one specific area where we've waived issues around camping. Is that correct? That's why our -- I mean, because it's on county property, so why would we -- is that correct?
Right. Council can approve by motion any site within the city.
Exemption to the -- okay. Have we any manner of liability from the county's point of view if anything were to occur there, or is it held in the same sort of condition with Nightingale as we would with other facilities that we run?
Glenn, do you want to speak to that?
Can you try that question?
One of the things we talked about pretty extensively when we talked about the first rest stops was the issue of liability and the issue of the organization that's running it, assuming that rather than the city.
Correct.
Have we that same protection here, or are we exposed in any fashion by either the county or the organization?
The agreement that we will have with the -- let me back up. The county has agreed to, in essence, lease us the property so that we can enter into the agreement with Nightingale. So, we have a spread of one and a half-page lease that really just says, for $1, the county will let us use this property for a rest stop consistent with, or two rest stops consistent with city code and regulations. In exchange, we agree, besides paying them the $1, to defend and indemnify if anything comes up related to the rest stop. So, your question was broad enough. Is there any risk at all? The answer is yes, but the risk is no different here than it would be for the other rest stops that the council has authorized in other locations. We
Do we have the insurance? I can't remember if we have any insurance requirement.
We did.
We do have an insurance requirement in the site agreement that will be the same here as it is in others.
Okay. I think that's my only question at this time. I guess I would ask, or I would make a side comment, that while it's good to create opportunities that give those in need help, it's nowhere near adequate to the scope of the problem. And I'll probably vote in favor of this. But I wonder how many of these we will create? I wonder how many and at what point we have enough if we're going to create enough rest stops for 2,000 people or -- I mean, I'm not sure I understand the broader scope of our direction and how we mean to address this problem, rather than just bite at it a little bit at a time, so.
Counselor Polling?
Thank you. Yeah, this topic came up at the PSCC meeting last week. In fact, I brought it up to just kind of let everybody know about it. And first of all, I want to make it known that I do appreciate that the county was willing to kind of step up and work with us and with the Nightingale folks to try to work this out. I had a couple of concerns. One was, my understanding is that both of these rest stops are going to give priority to people with mental health issues and physical disabilities. So, my major concern was making sure that these sites were ADA-accessible. And the county administrator assured me that it was, those ADA concerns would be addressed at no expense to any public agency, that in fact, that the Nightingale people would be responsible for addressing those issues. So, that was a good point. The other thing is that I will support this motion. One reason is this is a temporary site, and that's what these rest stops are supposed to be, not like the other ones, which are campgrounds. But this one is a rest stop that will run until mid-April. I do have some concerns about how they're going to determine the priority of the people that are being admitted into them. I personally want to make sure that we address these issues to our truly homeless people from Eugene, not the people that come from the East Coast, spend three years living on the streets because, in their own words, "It's easy to get free stuff here, and it's better to do it that way than have to work a job on the East Coast." So, I still have some concerns about that, but being that this is a temporary rest stops, I am supportive of it. I would like to, and I'm probably going to go over a little bit over my time, but I would like to read an email that I received from Jennifer Yeh, who's the head of the Harlow Neighborhood Association. And it reads, "The Harlow Neighbors Board," that's the executive board, "met with Mary Broadhurst and Michael Carrigan, representatives from the Nightingale Health Sanctuary, and Mike Kinnison from the city of Eugene on Monday, December 1, 2014. After that meeting and further discussion, the Harlow Board is supportive of the rest stop Nightingale Health Sanctuary is proposing on Land County land on MLK Boulevard. The Harlow Board took several issues into consideration, including the concern that increased services could lead to an increased unhoused population in the area, and the fact that the MLK Boulevard area has both our highest concentrated population and also the highest crime in Harlow area. However, after meeting with the Nightingale representatives, their holistic approach, realistic and organized future plans, valid screening process for applicants, and clear deadline for site removal, made this project fully supportable. The Harlow Board would encourage your support of this temporary rest stop project and looks forward to looking for opportunities to work with the Nightingale Health Sanctuary during their time in the Harlow." So, that, we see, this project is receiving the support from the Harlow Neighborhood Associations, but it didn't come easy. It didn't come lightly. And I want to thank the Nightingale representatives and city staff, and also the Harlow Board for meeting and going over this issue in the fashion that they did.
Thank you, George. I would just like to say that because of the conversation that we've had, that at least now, all of our rest stops are temporary for a limited period of time. Unless we choose to keep them going, they won't keep going. And it's all our hope that the folks who reside in the rest stops will find more permanent places to be. So, I wanted to say that. And the other thing is that for the public, I think it's important for them to think of this as one of many pieces that are at work. And I think this is into our prior discussion on the legislation, is that our real goal is to create enough economic development to give people more opportunities so that fewer people will find themselves unhoused, and to pursue a housing-first policy, which will lead people to housing solutions instead of needing shelter and other kinds of support services. So, we're trying to lift all those boats at the same time. And if we're successful, if we're successful, we should see a really recognizable reduction in numbers of homeless folks in our community if all these things are brought to bear in a way that really turns the dial. And that's certainly our hope. So, are any other ready to vote on this? Okay. All those in favor, please indicate. One, two, three, seven in favor and none in opposition. It passes. Thank you all very much. And that ends our work session. Oh, no. We need to do two things. We're going to save ourselves some time later this evening. And we are going to do our consent calendar. Council President?
I move to approve the items on the consent calendar.
Second. Moved and seconded. Counselor Brown?
Can I pull Item C?
Yes.
And just learn who's being reappointed? I mean, state it for the public, for the jury.
Shirley, someone here?
Michelle?
Yes.
Hi.
Excuse me?
Yeah, I just would like you to tell everybody, the viewers on TV and the people in the room, who's being appointed.
This item is to appoint Hillary Loud as a citizen representative to the Metropolitan Wastewater Management Commission. Hillary's been on the commission since 2006 and has represented the citizens of Eugene well and is nominated by the mayor, and we're requesting your approval of her appointment.
Thank you. Yeah, I think it's a very good, a good choice. She's got a lot of experience and brings some history and knowledge, and is a good choice. Thank you.
Are you still wanting to pull it, or?
No.
No.
We've kind of taken care of it, right?
Yeah.
Yes. Leave it on, yes.
I would just like to comment that Hillary was actually first appointed to the MWMC Board when I was on the MWMC Board. And I would like to say that she didn't hesitate getting her feet wet, so to speak. I mean, she jumped right in the middle of it, was learning all she could, and did a great job while I was on the board. And I was going through the AIS, and I read that she is, in fact, at one time is either now or currently the, or has been the board president. And I think she's a great fit for this organization. And from what I saw when I was on the MWMC Board, I was really glad she was there.
Great. Okay. We put the motion on the table.
It's already on.
All those in favor, please indicate. One, two, three, seven in favor, none in opposition. It passes. So, thank you. For thank you. With that, we are through with the business. What is it?
Do you have a ceremonial thing, or do you want to wait?
The ceremonial thing requires people being here.
That's true. It's better getting ceremonial parts.
You want the big ceremony instead of the small ceremony.
Okay. Yes.
I just have a question. I was -- got a call asking why we had left the cell phone item till the end of the evening. Because I understand that since it's already been published, we can't change that an earlier time.
I can talk -- there was some conversation about moving that when we moved them up to the work session here. And what I discussed with staff is that we wouldn't want to do that because there may be people that are coming to the public forum to talk about that topic. And I didn't think it would be appropriate if you had already had your conversation and people are showing up expecting to hear it or comment that they didn't have the ability to do that, so.
I guess what this person's really asking, though, is that we put it earlier in that meeting instead of at the very end.
It's up to you, but generally by practice, what we've always done is do the business of the council, and then if there is a work session, then it moves into that.
So, I have to tell you what I would say for tonight, at least, is that there is no motion involved in tonight, and so, there is no action to be taken. And this is the first discussion. I assume you will perhaps indicate that you want to continue the discussion.
Getting a cell call right now.
And so, if, we'll take into consideration what you brought up for the next time, if we have another work session on it, we'll get it at an earlier time.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, everybody.
Cell tower's working just fine.